Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming to the monthly board meeting of the Ellington Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:04. I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda will be the special recognition. Mr. Greenlee?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
All right. So, for those of you who don't know Anita, Anita Yost has been the coordinator of accounting for the last five years. Before that, she's spent multiple roles in the district. She's actually been an employee just about two years longer than I've been alive. So, she's seen it all, the good, the bad, maybe sometimes ugly. When she started, there were no computers, just mini graph machines and paper ledgers. So, you can imagine how much has changed in those last many years. For the past five years, she's been my right hand, helping us lead things forward with all the change that's happened. It would, I think it would have been easier for her to say, "I don't want to learn this new thing. I don't want to take on this new challenge. I've been here long enough, it's time to go." But thankfully, she didn't. Because, you know, when I was just a few months on the job and had health issues, I knew that she was there managing the day-to-day, which was really a great benefit for everybody. When COVID-19 hit and we focused on health, she was there leading the charge for the transition to the new accounting system. She led the team, did all that work, and we focused on other things. And, you know, she was instrumental in actually removing the last paper ledger from, you know, she started on paper ledger, she was also instrumental in removing the last paper ledger from the school system just a couple of years ago. So, the students and families of Ellington may not have interacted with her the way that they would have a teacher or a principal. They may not know her name the way that they would a superintendent, though a lot of people do know Anita because she's everywhere in town. But they do owe her a big debt of gratitude for her years of steady service and leadership and making the Ellington Public Schools the best that they can be. So, Anita, we're going to wish you very well, and we're going to miss you very much, and best of luck.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Scott. I've learned a lot from both Brian and Scott, and I think they've learned a little from me over the years. I have been extremely fortunate to be able to live in the town I work in. My children are a product of the Ellington School System, and I'm going to brag about them because that's what moms do. My daughter was the valedictorian of the class of 1997. She went and did her graduate studies at UNC Chapel Hill, so we are proud Tar Heels. She is now, there were 102 kids in her class, so that's how things have changed over the years. She is now a mental health counselor in Raleigh, North Carolina, doing something she absolutely loves and is so needed especially today. My son graduated from the Florida Institute of Technology in Melbourne. He studied as an aerospace engineer and got his pilot's license. He's now an aerospace engineer at Pratt Whitney, and they both volunteer in their communities, which is what I think everybody needs to do. I truly believe they wouldn't be the people that they are and as successful as they are without the education they got in Ellington. Allison wanted to take additional Spanish classes that bumped into a lab that she took once or twice a week, and at the time, it was Eileen Cooper who said, "I'm going to let you do it because I know you can manage it." So, that's the kind of education they give in town. I don't know if that would happen everywhere. I think they're also successful because they had two parents that always paid attention, made sure that we were doing what we were supposed to be doing, and they were doing what they were supposed to be doing. I thank all of you for volunteering all your time and your commitment to the kids of Ellington because without you, without your superintendent, Brian, who I feel is one of the best hires they've ever made, they would not get the best gift that you can give them, which is a public education. Thank you all.
Thank you.
If I may, I just have one more quick recognition of the retirement of a longtime employee. Frank Raya, I don't know if any of you know him, he's been the courier here for the district for the last 26 years. He actually started at the ripe young age of 66 years old, so you can imagine 26 years later where he is now. He's got an amazing story. He's a former jockey. He started bodybuilding at age 55. You know, he's known across the schools for his, you know, laughter and stories, and he's been part of the fabric, obviously, of the Ellington School District for the last 26 years. So, we just want to wish him all the best in his retirement. We've offered him status of courier emeritus where he can come visit us at any point in time. Best wishes to Frank as well.
Thank you very much, Brian. As we move on to citizens and staff forum, our first speaker this evening is Jason Josephiak.
So, I don't have any prepared remarks for today. I think I've said everything I've needed to say over the past few months here. The one thing I will say, though, is that I've seen no movement on the agenda from this committee of having a standing item to discuss mask mandates. Now, I know the state is doing a bunch of coercion with the school systems and whatnot, but my God, will none of you speak about this in an open forum where we know where your position is? What is going to happen in February when the state comes out and maybe they extend it? Or maybe they come out with vaccine requirements? You have a duty to communicate to your citizens where your thoughts lie. I've sent countless emails to all of you. All of you have received them. Where's the communication back and forth, or at least discussion in this forum about the content of those emails? And don't just address my emails, address all the other people in this community's emails. I find it appalling, the silence that we have on this committee, absolutely appalling. I know all of you are really good people. I know you're in a tough spot, but my God, stop being cowards, stand up, and have some damn courage. I am sick and tired of coming here and then seeing no action. Action doesn't mean you have to be loud and push back against the state, but plan and at least show the citizens and the community of the good people of Ellington that you So, next month, I expect to have an agenda item on here discussing mask mandates, discussing what your plan is in February, should the governor do this, and should the governor do that? Look at all of us around here. How many people have masks right now? And you want to dictate a mandate that my five-year-old wear a mask to kindergarten? He doesn't wear a mask anywhere else, except for this inside the school system. Stop hiding behind the government mandates, start standing up, and start doing something.
Jen, is my mic on? Is my mic on? I don't think so.
I just want to note for the record that, I just want it noted for the record that I did respond and have a conversation with the last speaker and was very clear on my position.
Thank you. The next speaker is Beverly Russo.
It's so much easier when you have a place to put your paper. Wherever your timer is. Good evening. Another month has come and gone, and we are in exactly the same position as last June when I met with the superintendent of schools. Things are exactly the same as August 27th when I emailed the Board of Education concerning the constitutional right of free speech and indicated my position that I would speak at every meeting until June 2022, which met and exceeded the notice required by your rules. Even after my request at the last board meeting verbally and in writing, there is no answer from these elected people, no answers to the questions about what is really happening in Ellington schools. The situation in the schools is exactly the same since parents started coming to meetings. Masks are required, tests required, shots if you want to participate in activities or maintain employment. For several months, I've witnessed concerned men and women in this town speak at Board of Ed meetings, presenting data and their concern about the health and the safety of their children. Each month, as new data emerges, these amazing people stand before you and provide the new disclosures and the truths about the situations in our worlds. It is clear that data and facts have no impact on the decisions, on your decisions on this matter, and neither does the number of parents involved. Then what is the real reason for these draconian measures in our town schools? So much has been disclosed at this point. You have had months to correct your course and plenty of time to stop doing what disclosure and declassification are proving were only misdirected, not only misdirected, but harmful decisions. I will not go over what you probably already know. And that's not five minutes, sorry. So, I know that. I will not go over what you already know. I'm going to give you a picture as a handout. The first picture speaks to hypercapnia, carbon dioxide poisoning in children, and the second is from a box of masks sold at Big Y. On the box are instructions stating, "Use once for a period not to exceed four hours, then dispose of properly." My understanding is that children and teachers are required to wear masks for seven to eight hours, way longer than the not-to-exceed limit for masking. Ladies and gentlemen, you can research for yourselves. Actually, just read the boxes of the masks. At your last meeting, I learned that the punishment to high school students was tickets. I still wonder what kind of punishment is given to students at Longview and the three elementary schools. No one answers that. When it concerns proper mask-wearing, it seems you allow punishment to the point of bullying. Why won't you share your policy on mask-wearing and enforcement in the schools? I am sad that after all the information you have, each of you as board members, administrators, and even teachers choose to force mask compliance and submission of children. The old adage is apparently true in this situation. If you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. So, since speaking to you and providing data to you does not work, it is clear that only God can help us now, so let us pray for just one moment. Great Creator, source of all and ruler of the universe, we invite you to be with us tonight. Be in our schools, be with each board member, each administrator, each teacher, and all the employees of this system, all parents, and especially be with the children. Let them be children, Lord. Let them live as they were created, breathing freely, playing, learning, growing. Do not allow them to be used and abused, Lord. I pray for the health and the safety of all children. I also pray that all parents rise up and unite in defense of their children. I pray tonight for the reemergence of independent thought and critical thinking and discernment of all adults and children. May the adults in charge of Ellington schools do your will, Lord, and do what is right and good in your sight. Forgive those who do not know what they do. For whoever lives by the truth comes to the light, so that it may be seen plainly that what they have done has been done in the sight of God. For I am convinced that neither death nor life, neither angels nor demons, neither present nor future, nor any powers, not masks, not PCR tests, not gene-altering experimental shots, will be able to separate us from the love of God. I pray that we all make the right decisions. Amen.
Thank you, Beverly.
I do have a picture for you because data is difficult. I apologize that my mask picture is so, the box picture is so small, but you can go to the other side.
While Beverly is passing that out, I will ask our next speaker to come forward. That would be Nicole Ray, Roy, sorry.
I just wanted to come tonight. I've said pretty much everything that I could say at this time, but I really feel like we're at the calm before the storm. February will be here before we know it, and we've been here at every meeting presenting you with tons of information, our feelings, our thoughts. And I would appreciate an upcoming meeting with the topic of possible extension of mandates here in Connecticut. I think it's important to plan specifically the upcoming mask and vaccine mandates that we should expect here in February. If someone on the board can get back to me and let me know if it'll be on the agenda next month, that would be December, January, that'd be really cutting it close. I expected it to be on the agenda last month, the month before, and this month, and I didn't see anything on that. And I don't mean remarks at the end, I mean like an actual conversation on the agenda, planning, like action. So, if we could find out when that will be and how we're going to have a backup plan here, right in Ellington, in case there is a plan for vaccine mandates and, you know, a possible your child has to wear a mask if they're not vaccinated, your child doesn't if they're vaccinated. How are we in Ellington here going to plan against this possible segregation that can be here, you know, within the blink of an eye before we know it? So, hopefully, it'll be on the agenda next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Gardner.
I came up here in September and talked about masks and how strongly I oppose them, and I still do. And I personally, I believe it's borderline child abuse to force kids to wear a mask. I also brought up the SEL curriculum, being taught in the Ellington School System. For those unaware, SEL stems from CASL. CASL is Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. SEL is used as a vessel for CRT and to train vulnerable students into becoming social justice activists. Don't believe me? Go to the Ellington Public School website under District Information. There's a link called Social Emotional Supports and Trauma Informed Practices. That is a mouthful. On the surface, this is a page with resources for drug abuse, access to food, and so forth, with links to websites. Then there's one called Talking to Your Child About Race. So, there's a few links on there. Teaching tolerance, okay, you know, it sounds like something that I can get on board with 100%. Avoiding racial equity detours, okay. The Critical Work of Racial Identity. Accomplishing of racial identity models. A Look at Implicit Bias and Microaggressions. How White Parents Can Use Media to Raise Anti-Racist Kids. These are all used to promote CRT. Implicit bias, racial equity, racial identity, anti-racist. A link under the LGBTQ brings you to a page where it starts to identify yourself by your sexual orientation and gender. What happened to treat everyone the same? Instead, you're promoting inequity, the exact opposite. What happened to good character? Instead, you're promoting kids to identify strictly by their race, gender, and sexual preference. My children have had all these things pushed on them in the last two years of school, and they tell me everything. It's not your job to promote homosexuality to minors. It's not your job to promote transgenderism to minors. It's not your job to promote racial inequity to children. It is my job to teach my children values, character, tolerance, not yours. I want SEL out of the curriculum. Ellington has a watered-down version of it. In other towns, counties, and states, it's a lot worse, which means the indoctrination can get worse here. You cannot control this curriculum. The negatives far outweigh the positives. Teachers can use this to push their own agenda and weaponize it to vulnerable children. All this does is teach kids to look at everything through a lens of race, sexual preference, and gender. Then, under the guise of inequity, they are taught that they are oppressed and must fight their oppressors. It's decisive and doesn't belong in the hand of teachers, and I'm asking the board tonight to remove this curriculum from the school system.
Our last speaker this evening is Juliette DeAntonio.
DeAntonio.
DeAntonio, sorry.
This is just some information for everyone. I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize, but can I just have? Sure. I'm not sure. I look forward to hearing your phone calls for implement weather. Good evening. This is about masking our kids. It was once said two weeks to flatten the curve on March 16th, 2020. Now, it's November 17th, 2020, which is one year, eight months, and one day. Still here we are, our children masked. On March 17th, 2020, Fauci publicly discouraged the use of masks on 60 Minutes in an interview. I am almost certain most of us here have seen it or heard it. On March 30th of 2020, World Health Organization, its director general supported mask use in medical settings, but said it wasn't necessary for the general public. It is not imperative for our kids to wear these masks. The mainstream media, Fauci, and some of our elected officials have put the fear in us right from the beginning. The repetitive saying on Fox and other channels, they would say, "Stay home, stay safe, save lives, we're all in this together." This began to be more unsettling, a feeling of they are trying to condition us. In other words, the brainwashing has begun. Still, I wore my mask for a little while to follow the rules and not make any waves, but eventually, I just stopped. I stopped it altogether since it was bothersome to breathe through the mask, and I could still smell through it. I still went through the motions of sanitizing everything I could just to be safe. Why are we fearing COVID-19 when it was highly, when it's a high immortality rate? Our kids have a better chance not getting it and transmitting it to adults. That is a known fact. That is real science. NIH funding gain-of-function research at the Wuhan lab in China. And lastly, Fauci's NIH funding the Beagle puppies experiments. I missed something. I apologize. Well, anyways, the Beagle puppy experiments, debarking them, injecting them with anesthesia, then letting starved sandflies eat their ears and face. They wanted to see if the flies preferred puppies infected with a parasite over the healthy puppies? Is that why they debarked them, so they couldn't hear the poor helpless puppies cry and whine and feeling scared once they awoke? I also wanted to add this, that for a while, we were hearing, "Mask up, don't mask up." Back to mask up again, maybe put two or three more masks on now. Okay. $20 billion a year of our tax dollars go to NIH for animal testing. Technology today is so advanced, more effective and efficient, that they have computer models of organs on chips that are thumb-size, fully functioning miniature-sized human organs. I think that's amazing, by the way. You can model disease in them and test drugs, et cetera. Getting back to the masks, I want to tell you what happened at EMS on November 1st of 2021 to my son, Anthony. On that day, he was called out of block. He was brought to a classroom where his academic teachers and principal were waiting for him. He said this, "When I walked in the room, Mom, I was freaked out and thought, 'What is going on? Am I in big trouble or something? What did I do?'" Then they proceeded to tell him that he needs to wear the mask at all times on his face. He has told me on occasion that he pulled the mask down so he could get a drink of water, and they brought that to his attention. He also would get tired, get headaches, pull the mask down so he could feel like he could breathe better, and he would get in trouble for that, too. I know everybody is in a tight situation right now, I get it, but this is getting out of hand. Frankly, he is tired of wearing the mask. He needs a break. He should get a break from it, all the kids should. Better yet, they should just stop this mask-wearing altogether. He has been getting, like I said, the headaches, and breathing in your own carbon dioxide all day cannot be that good. He wasn't the only kid on a list. That upset me because my son was intimidated by adults in his school, all because of a mask mandate, which is not a law, and these masks have little protection. They do not protect. Public health experts keep changing mask versus no mask. Healthy persons do not spread illness. Mask mandates as public policy is a disaster. Particle size key to it all. N95 respirators, surgical masks, cloth masks, wearing a mask blocks oxygen, wearing a mask leads to CO2, leading to cognitive dysfunction. If I just may, please. We touch our face, therefore, we get germs and we touch our mask. The kids have lunch together, and they cannot eat with the masks on. With all due respect, a rational person realizes how asinine it is, mask up in a restaurant, but then take it off when you eat, knowing you're breathing, you're all breathing the same air. There is a significant drawback masking our kids. I am completely against masking of our kids, but in the end, it should be up to the parents whether they want to send their son or daughter to school without a mask or with a mask. Freedom of choice, our God-given rights. It's time to reevaluate the situation and look to different doctors, nurses, and research scientists. How can you honestly make a good decision if you only listen to one side of the spectrum? We need to listen to both sides of the spectrum. The reason why we only hear one side of the spectrum is because they're only trying to push one narrative. Medical personnel have been banned, canceled, and even fired from their jobs thanks to social media and mainstream news media. You all know, deep down inside, it's all wrong or it doesn't make sense. Maybe you all need to do is start researching. A woman, a doctor, 40 percent says 40% of pediatric hospitalizations-
I'm sorry, Julia, I have to ask you to just wrap it up in the next minute.
Wrapping it up.
Okay.
Were overcounted. Dr. Nicole Sapphire wrote this in her op-ed in reference to COVID-19 masks and children. She wrote, "To put it bluntly, because hospitals have instituted universal testing of patients, incidental positive cases were found when kids were admitted for other reasons, including mental health disease and orthopedic fractures, not from symptoms of COVID-19. If we are truly to follow the science, we must allow children to resume their normal activities." She found the numbers were inflated and goes to say during an interview on Fox, "Nothing nefarious here, but when patients went in for a biopsy, they were tested for COVID-19, and if they were positive, they had to wait. They didn't have symptoms, but they actually were asymptomatic." Same for the kids. Only 46% of those kids were asymptomatic to COVID, but they were treated as COVID hospitalization because they were in the hospital and tested positive. There is a perceived level of risk when it comes to this virus in young children. That perceived level of risk does not equate to reality. You see, there really is no reason to keep our children masked. You see, there really is no reason to keep our children masked. I have more to say, but I guess I'll have to come back to that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I honestly hope that you guys will start looking into more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time when we're going to go into caucus. Is that correct? Can I get a motion to go into caucus for discussion of positions?
Moved movement into caucus to discuss positions.
Okay.
In my house.
Seconded by Marsha. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We're headed into caucus. Thank you.
Do you know where we're going?
No.
We're going to split between the two rooms. I don't know who's...
The two rooms, like, where are we going to go?
How does the process, sorry, how does the process for me just say we vote on it? Is that how it works? I have never done this before, so.
Yeah, so you can call the meeting to order back in session, right?
Yep.
And then you can, there can be an initial motion, especially for a nomination for.
I would entertain a motion at this time for chair position.
I would move that Jen Zanbi chair.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Would entertain a motion for vice chair.
I move for Mike Young to be vice chair.
Second.
Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion for treasurer.
I move Liz Nord for treasurer of this group.
Second.
Seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. I would entertain a motion for the position of secretary.
I move Jen Mullen for secretary of the Board of Education.
Second.
Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. This is your new board chair group. Congratulations, everyone.
We don't even have to change names.
We don't even have to change names.
That's economically sensible.
Moving on, oh yeah, okay, thank you. There you go. Thank you. I am going to make the chair report very quick because I didn't have much prepared. But I did want to thank the viewers and anyone out there who's listening for coming out to vote and supporting the town and the people that they voted for. We appreciate your efforts in coming out and supporting us. I also wanted to mention to everyone as we're heading into the holiday season to please stay safe, stay healthy, and enjoy your families during this time and this holiday season. And I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a happy Kwanzaa and a happy Thanksgiving and a happy Hanukkah and all that. And the last item that I do have on the agenda is to introduce our newest board member, who is Steve Vines. And I would ask you, Steve, if you would say a few words about yourself.
Okay, I feel welcome already. Appreciate Scott calling me shortly after I was voted in. And I appreciate the kind regards and encouragement. And just, some people might not know who I am. I've been in the town for over forty years. My wife was a My wife was a resident of the town long before I was. She went to high school here. And I had two children that went through the school system. Rebecca, who was, went through here and graduated in 2008. And Anna was a special needs child. And she went to school here till she was 18 years old. And so now I'm retired a couple of years ago and realizing time and life is short. And I hadn't really provided any public service in my life. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to pitch in for the town. I always appreciated the town and enjoyed living here. And it's time to give back. That's the reason why I'm here. And I also have two grandchildren, one in center school and one to soon be in center school next year. So I thought it'd be a good opportunity to be involved.
What a great sentiment. Thank you. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone wishes to remove? Hearing none, the consent agenda stands. Next item is reports and discussion items, special reports. I see Mr. Greenleaf getting up. Hello. Yes, thank you.
Hello again. How's everybody now? All right, so here to recognize our new emergency services director, Walter Lee. Before I get to Walter, I just want to first congratulate Joe Palambezio on his recent retirement. I know he's looking forward to spending more time with his grandkids, which I think anybody at that stage of life, it's a great thing for them to do. So Joe well wishes. Joe was always a supporter of the school district and did a lot to help us out in his part-time capacity. And so we just thank Joe for all his service over the last few years. So as we look forward, we have a new formalized partnership with the town and a full-time position and someone great to lead us within that. We're obviously working on ways that with Walter, we can take it to the next level. He's already been out on site at Windermere for a lockdown drill and pointing out things that can help us improve our protocols and maybe some long-term facilities projects that'll help us keep out safer. So he's got a good eye for these things. He stood out in the pool for his personal demeanor and his deep knowledge of public safety. Prior to coming to Ellington, he was served for 20 years at the Capitol State Police, 11 years on command staff, nine as chief of that unit. He dealt with the political pressures that you might imagine there at the Capitol. He also saw the safety of an onsite daycare center, which was another thing that stuck out within his resume, working with the staff there to, you know, ensure their preparations for a safe environment as well. Prior to that, he served for several years in the Army of Reserves as a military police sergeant and is a graduate of the United States Military Police Academy. He's also an Ellington resident and a center school dad. So with that, we welcome Walter to the team.
Thank you. I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm Walter, like he said. This position really was intriguing to me. As you heard, I dedicate my life to public service pretty much my entire adult life, first nationally with the military and then statewide with the Capitol Police. When this opportunity arose, I jumped at it because it's the first time I can actually serve the community I live in. I've been an Ellington resident for 12 years now. I grew up in Manchester, but this is my home now. My wife and her family are from this area. I see a few distant relatives sitting around the table, some familiar faces from youth soccer programs. And I'm really looking forward to serving the community. I think you had a good one in Scott here. I met with him and felt more like I've known him for a while more than it did like an interview. Brian, of course, like they said, I'm very personal. I have a really outgoing personality. I like to have levity. I like to keep things light. But as I told them, when it's time to get serious, nobody can get more serious than I can. So I look forward to working with you guys and hopefully we can create, you know, as I told them during my interview, we want to be the community of choice in the area where everybody wants to come and live. Let's be the best educational system in the area where everybody wants their kids to go to school, where they can go in a safe, fun learning environment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Walter. And I think everybody should note, like, this is shared services in action right here. And no better way to start it than to have Walter join our group here in town. And this is what happens when great minds come together across the town committees. So, welcome, Walter. We're very excited to work with you. Thank you. Regular board committee reports. Curriculum, Dr. Young.
All right, that would be me. I can be quick. We had a two-item agenda. We met yesterday. The first item was a report. Mr. Barton, if you'll take the stand here, we'll just summarize as best I can and feel free to add in. The first item was about nascent gifted and talented program. We haven't had that for many, many years. And prior to that, it was only in the elementary schools, as far as Marcia and I could remember. And the idea is that we'll be piloting some things and then moving forward with identifying kids in January who would start into a gifted program next January. So the pilot will be, I mean, next fall, but our pilot will start in January. And the programs included, I have a list here, Connecticut History Day, National History Day, Try Your Hardest Math Problem Contest, and the Stock Market Game as examples of the kinds of things that would be available to identify gifted kids initially and will be piloted in the spring. Anything to add there?
No, those programs have started and under Krista Brogel, who is teaching a slew of students across a variety of schools. And more students will be identified in January for programming starting this year. We'll do, we're shifting to an identification cycle or nomination cycle that would be in the spring of every year, so we're ready to start each fall. But it's very much in a learning mode, researching models in other districts.
Yep, and we got a nice report about that. The second item and final item was, I guess Mr. Barton brought this up to the school, but it's a seal of biliteracy in language skills. And basically, this is a program for languages that kids would speak at home and they would be fluent in reading, writing, in that language, but it's not taught in the high school. So they could get, they could get a badge by taking a test with the state that would show that they are fluent in this home language that they have. So Tamil, what came up, and Gaelic, and we discussed a number of issues that parents might be really interested in having their children get this seal of biliteracy. And that, too, we're piloting to some extent. There was a nice discussion of who would pay for that. We're talking about as little as 20 bucks for most of them and as much as 150 for some very rare languages.
Would you entertain a question?
I'm actually, yeah, of course.
Would this be open to all high school students or is this still part of the talented?
No, no, no. This is all. We're talking about.
Right, it's open to all high school students. And students, as Dr. Young said, would either choose to take the test because of a language they speak at home, but also in a year three or four of a world language taught at the high school, which includes French, Spanish, Arabic, and American Sign Language. Students taking those languages.
Latin.
And Latin, thank you, would be able to test and be approved or shown to be proficient in a language that they started studying here in Ellington.
What about middle school? Could we offer it to the middle school?
You have to be pretty advanced. It has to be pretty fluent. And a lot of kids can speak it because they hear it at home, but the writing part of it is going to be a challenge particularly.
But it's not out of the question if someone is.
It is not out of the question. But in something like Cyrillic or Taiwanese or Mandarin, they might hear it and be able to, you know, speak it, but not be able to pass the test in writing it. It would be of interest, I think you brought this to the committee, that there are 102 languages spoken at home as the primary language here in Ellington?
102 students or families report a primary language at home other than English. And that includes, in our English as a Second Language Program, we have 15 students who across them speak 13 different languages.
Wow.
And I would, I was at the meeting, and Ms. Garberl, the French teacher, also made a comment which struck me with my children. If it's helping also, like we said, it's not just the English learners, it's all students. So like, if you're in French IV, you finally finish your year, you could take that test and it's on your diploma and it helps your, she mentioned scholarships, opportunities for having that seal of biliteracy. So it goes beyond high school. Hopefully you can use that in your college and it can be helpful for those four years.
Again, there were four or five schools, competitors of ours, if you will, that do this. And it was very exciting to see that we're piloting it. As we get information, we've asked the curriculum committee to stay in touch with that and get back to the board with recommendations, particularly about making sure that it's affordable for every kid.
Right. Excellent.
Yep, great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question on the gifted program, gifted and talented? Is there a certain percentage that you will identify? Because I know there's, it's, some states, there is some funding depending on what you do with that.
Right, so we wouldn't set a fixed percentage before nominating students. We nominate them based on students who are demonstrating gifted and talented attributes, which include higher-than-average academic ability, task persistence or commitment to task, and creativity. So that's out of a model piloted or developed at UConn by Dr. Joe Ranzilli. So we wouldn't set a percentage of students per se, but in other districts, we find that it's usually 5% to 8% of students who would be nominated.
And would they be nominated for, like, if they were really good in math or really good in creative writing, that they would be, and not in the other?
Yes, that's correct. A student is not presumed or doesn't need to be gifted and talented across all the academic subjects, but could show a gift or a talent within one specific area. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Oliver. Operations, Carrie.
Yes, we had a brief meeting regarding the capital improvement plan, recommending to the board tonight that our number one priority would be computer and AVA, I'm sorry, AV replacement cycle, which would be this recurring lease. So you could see there on your sheet that it'd be $385,000 in the year '22, '23, and then in the, and then in the year '26, '27, another 385. So basically what's happening is this, there's issues. Our smart boards are now, I think, like 20 or 21 years old in the classroom. So we have to start funding to replace those to stay current. And I guess the new smart boards are not the same as what we have now. They'd be more like a touchscreen, this kind of a thing. But it doesn't make sense to keep trying to repair some of them or if they're glitching or then the kids miss out on learning. So what we need to do is replace those over a period of time and that we would, this would be our first priority on the list. The second priority was the elevator at the Ellington Middle School. Again, these, the way they're numbered was recommended by the administration. So during the meeting, they explained that the elevator situation at the middle school was dire and that we really needed to put that as number two, even though there was some discussion that our gymnasium floor, which most of you are familiar with at Crystal Lake, needs to be replaced because of the defects in it. That made number three on our list. But part of the reason, too, with putting the order like one and two is when we go to the town for the funding, these are really like code safety issues that we're concerned with. So we don't think that we're going to get really a pushback because it's kind of what we have to do. The last thing on the list that we're not sure we're going to make it, but we put it on there as listed as number four, is the modern classroom furniture. This is so that the kids can have, you know, not those old-style one-armed bandits, that the desks are built to collaborate and hold Chromebooks. And they look, you know, they're plastic, they look nice, they're more lightweight, movable, so kids can pull together and collaborate and they kind of come together. So that was number four on the list. I don't know if I missed something, but, Brian, but.
No, I actually, you did a great job. The only thing I will note is 285 of the 385 is something that's coming off the books on the town side. We did it four years ago. They do a four-year lease. And so really, the additional ask there for AV equipment is $100,000 on top of what we'd normally do.
So one of the other things, I didn't really get to tell you this, Brian, but through my conversations with the PTO president at Windermere, on another issue, she was talking about they have some extra money. The PTO, so for some of you that don't know this, the PTOs were the ones that paid for the smart boards initially. But I did speak to Erica because they had extra money. So what happened is, is the reason why we have extra money is because during COVID, we really couldn't do a lot of the activities.
At Windermere, this is, I'm sorry. Are you speaking just about Windermere or you talk about all three?
I'm just speaking about Windermere. So I'll combine my liaison report, but only as it relates to this operations.
Okay.
So, yes, at Windermere, probably all the schools, I would imagine, she basically said because of COVID, they couldn't do a lot of the activities. So they have, you know, money that they were looking to do. So when I do the holiday fair over there, which I'm going to invite you all to go, and I want to see all your shiny faces, it's awesome. You guys will love it. It's amazing, amazing, amazing. But anyways, do the holiday fair. She said, "Don't worry about the money. You have extra money to spend, blah, 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 because we didn't do the sales." So anyway, this is where the smart boards came up. I did mention it to her that if there's extra money that to check, to check with you and Ms. Hill, and that they may have some money to be able to replace some of the smart boards at Windermere.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so it's full circle around. But plug for the holiday fairs, the week of December 6. Our chair will be wrapping all of the gifts. I will be there. Liz has done it before. It's a fun event. Your grandkids will be there. So you come in, the kids come and they shop, they're little kids, they come and they shop, and they get their presents wrapped and bring them home to their families. It is one of the best events we do at Windermere, not just because I run it, just because the kids love it. And it's just like this great thing when you see the smile on their face and they're getting their, like, mom or sister, dad, and it's like Jen told me the story the other day about how Nick bought her a match car and she still has it. It's like super special. So the kids get to pick the stuff out themselves and they feel so proud and then they bring them home and whether they're, whatever holiday they're selling, celebrating, they can bring those home and share that with their family and celebrate the holidays, so.
And Carrie does do a lot of the shopping for this.
We have amazing.
Wow, this is a serious plug right now.
Amazing gifts. But even if you can just come for an hour, Board of Ed members, it's the week of the 6, sorry. So that, that, the week of the 6, so I think it's like 7th, 8th, and 9th. So yeah, so just come by. It's awesome. You're going to love it. So that wraps up my Windermere liaison and the operations.
Two-for-one special. Thank you very much, Ms. Sotcha. Communications.
Okay, so we did meet this Monday. We had two agenda items. The first one you will find as a motion, which is the 2022 Board of Ed regular meeting schedules. And you'll notice that the Saturday budget is one of the first ones in January, the Saturday meeting. So we can move on those later. And the second agenda item that we talked about was the behind-the-scenes. And I'm going to be filming some of that Friday evening at the high school football game under the lights. So I'm going to film the intro. And then Chair Zen is going to go to bases and talk to some of the teachers there. And one of the things that I am probably going to do is ask more of you to make appearances in the behind-the-scenes. So we'd like to kind of shake it up a little bit, get some more views on YouTube. And so if I do tap you on the shoulder, Carrie, I think you might be next. We might want to talk about the Windermere project, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
That's it.
All right, thank you. The next committee was policy. In policy committee, we talked about. Uh, in policy committee, we talked about policy three-three-two-zero purchasing procedures and policy um, which we had some information that was missing that we're looking to add to that policy uh, regarding federal, federally awarded funds. Um, so we're going to be running that past the auditors, correct, for their review to let us know awarding? Sorry, Brian, you might as well just stay up here.
Yes, this is, the, the changes are um, federally required um, when we're purchasing, using federal funds. Um, the auditors are reviewing that policy because that's something that they flagged this year.
So we should have it up for review next month? Correct? Okay, thanks. You can sit down. No, thank you. I'll call you, I'll call you back up in another second. The other item that we uh, spoke about was we are looking at starting um, the daunting yet rewarding task of reviewing our policy book, cover to cover. Um, so we will be looking to start uh, with finding out who will be uh, bringing on board to assist us with that, whether that be cave or a law firm or whomever we feel is, is best at helping us to tighten our policy manual. Um, so we will look to start that. More information on that next month. And that's it for policy. Finance?
Okay, we met on Monday and we talked about, and Brian will fill you in more on this issue, um, the budget and um, some of the costs that we um, have that we weren't anticipating. Um, one of the things we talked about was the energy cost. The company that is handling that now has gone bankrupt. So we and are anticipating uh, between a ten to fifteen percent increase in the cost of electricity and oil and gas. Um, hopefully, um, Brian will find some way of getting this done without costing us that much.
Right under the bus there, Brian.
I noticed he's sitting down for that.
This is where you jump up and say yes. Um, there was also a um, an interest in maybe doing solar panels, looking to that so that that can save us some money. Um, and medical claims are um, down, so we have um, can move about a hundred and seventy-five thousand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand to the uh, medical account. Um, we also uh, talked a little bit about um, the possibility of hiring a curriculum coordinator for literacy and reading. I was concerned about the new mandates and um, I do think it's something that we need to discuss further. Um, and Brian was gonna try to bring this up to administration. Tuition line item reflects a negative two hundred and eighty-seven, but that would be um, handled through the excess cost reimbursement of six thousand, six hundred thousand. Um, we, the second item on the agenda was po, policies regarding donations. Um, donations are made to the school and from that perspective, the um, the purpose is decided what it would be used for and then the board would approve what it's going to be used for. So, um, which we have done be, in the past, like the lights and what have you. Um, and the wellness committee has um, received or will receive twenty thousand to uh, do some programs for the staff. Specific to the staff?
Uh, yes, specific to the staff.
That's it.
Uh, just a one clarification on the um, medical reserve. That was a, a budgeted um, line item where we are a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars below our budget currently. Obviously, we still have nine months left of the year to uh, see where that goes, but um, optimistically, um, we're looking good for the first three months of our new uh, experience on the self-funded plan.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Liz. Uh, number three, administrative reports, superintendent's report, Dr. Nickel.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I wanted to just, from the superintendent's report, uh, welcome Steve Vines uh, to the team. And um, I know you're gonna, I anticipate you thoroughly enjoying the Board of Education experience. Um, you got a lot of great people here. Um, what's great is they don't always agree, but they work together to come to decisions on things. And then when they make the decisions, uh, they support one another and the administration in implementing them. So, uh, you're joining a great team and uh, so I thank you in advance for your service. So, welcome. Um, my report uh, is very brief. Um, we had on an annual basis, um, which I think the, the board had requested and pushed for um, some pre-budgetary workshop type of situations where uh, teachers and administrators uh, were able to interface with board members um, regarding the budget and what they uh, feel uh, would be important for board members to be educated on and possibly consider uh, for the budget process. Um, and so uh, we plan on uh, creating that workshop again. Last year, we did it with stations. Um, and I think the board members appreciated it and uh, the, the principals and the teachers did a nice job. So we're working on creating that right now. The, the budget process um, essentially is underway where principals are developing their budgets uh, at their building levels. And in December is when we'll be meeting with all the principals to see what their requests are and start to kind of like develop things. I can tell you what our cabinet does. Uh, you know, myself, Oliver, Brian and Christie, is we're also looking at uh, what the priorities of the budget are at our cabinet meetings, starting to think about um, you know, what we will recommend, uh, what some possible aspects of the budget workshop could be and that's all in the formulation process. Uh, we originally had a December twentieth date for this workshop on the Monday. Um, at one of our other meetings, uh, we got some feedback at the communications meeting that, that, that may not be a good date. Uh, the, um, we, what was recommended was December fourteenth. And um, I went back to the team with that one and that's too early in the process for us. We won't be ready. Um, we're still meeting with the principals. It's just, it's too early for us. Uh, so we discussed it and, and, and I did discuss it with uh, um, Board Chair Zen uh, that we're, we're recommending that Wednesday when we come back, January fifth. Um, we're looking to see if that's gonna be a good date. We figure that if we do the workshop on, on January fifth, that's still about two and a half weeks till you actually have the Saturday board workshop where the, and the superintendent, I present my budget to you for you to consider. Um, and then if you saw on the calendar, you have a board meeting on the twenty-sixth. You have possibly, we can add finance committee meetings and we also have a possible board meeting we could meet again uh, prior to when we have, the board has to adopt a, a budget. So I didn't know if, if it was an easy um, look for you on your calendars on January fifth. If it's not right now, that's, we can, we can handle that by email um, this week, but that's what we're recommending for now.
Does everybody want to take a look at their calendars now?
So we'd have a meeting January fifth and January twenty-sixth?
And the twenty, and the twenty-second. It's budget, it's budget.
January, wait, twenty-second?
So January twenty-second is the budget. It's that Saturday review for the budget. Um, this would be on the fifth and those who were there last year, I think you find, you will find this workshop very helpful. Um, we meet with teachers, we meet with principals and we get an idea, bless you Jen, of um, what they're looking for in their budgets.
Okay, and the twenty-sixth would be the regular Board of Ed?
Regular Board of Ed meeting. Correct. Does that date seem to work for everyone? Can I get?
I'm good.
Twenty-six is the monthly board meeting. Twenty-second is the budget. It's a Saturday. And then the first date would be January fifth.
What time, January fifth?
I would, I would anticipate five o'clock.
Unless that doesn't work for people, then we can discuss that further. Can I get yeses, no's?
Yes.
Thank you. That was very easy. I appreciate it very much.
Would you send that out to us?
Absolutely. We'll send that out.
It's nice.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get it on Friday with all the updated versions.
On Saturday, eight or?
Um, we usually start like eight-thirty-ish with breakfast, right, and then go from there, Scott?
Yes, yes.
Really early.
No fire, there will be no fires.
Anything, anything before noon is early for Liz, but. Okay. Anything else, Scott?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Director's report. Guess what, Brian?
I, I keep telling Scott I'm doing something wrong, having to stand up here so many times. Um, all right, so uh, normal oper, normal finance uh, report in here. Um, you know, things still look good for the um, fiscal year. Just changes from last month, we moved um, some certified uh, staff funding line items. They were originally coded within the general fund um, that's in this report, but moved them off to grants uh, and other funding sources per our conversations, um, specifically around bases. Um, some of the staff were still within the, the general fund that needed to be moved into things like the Art Besser grant. So um, that line looks a little bit better um, this time around than it did last month. Um, and that, we're still working through on doing our projections. Um, as Liz noted, we do have um, some cost pressures that we anticipate after the first of the new year and um, we'll kind of assess how, how those are gonna impact us uh, for the total fiscal budget as they kind of come through, so. And working on doing it at a less than fifteen percent increase, but.
Any questions?
I'm not promising anything.
Yeah, I knew that was coming.
Was the second part that I thought I left off.
Any questions for Brian?
So I have a question.
Sure.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that, is that referred to this, that you're ahead of budget on?
A hundred and, uh,
Hundred and thirty-five for the medical.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So um, that is for our medical reserve fund. Um, it's a, it's a separate fund out, outside of the general fund. These are general fund expenditures only.
So how are you tracking on the budget now?
On, sorry, which?
Where, where are you on your budget? Now, is it, is it, are you gonna make a budget?
Yes. Yes, uh, which, specifically the general fund budget?
Yeah, just the general.
Yeah, so, so this one uh, overall shows a balance still of uh, six million, um, though the encumbrance on the um, medical isn't there, so you could probably reduce it by about four million dollars. So still about two million dollars to the good. Um, and again, we're, we're tracking things. This also includes some pre-incumbrances, which we're looking through for accuracy um, that might have a little bit of additional cost in them that we need to back out, so. Overall, I'm feeling confident for the end of the uh, the fiscal year on the general fund side.
We might self-insure it this year, as the first year.
All set, Steve? Anything additional? Any other questions, Steve? For him? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Board liaison reports. We can go around and we will start with Maddie.
All right, um, I hope everyone's doing well. The high school kicked off the month with the start of quarter two that happened on November fourth. And this was followed by the OKP, which is the, the drama troupe at the school during their first live and in-person performance since the pandemic began. And last Thursday, the student council hosted a, the annual Veterans Day ceremony. And I saw a few of you guys there. Um, it went very well and it really showcased leadership and hard work the student council members put into the ceremony and um, really enjoyed the opportunity to honor our veterans. And finally, the student parent conferences were held last week and ran successfully. And general time is just flying and um, we're looking forward to progressing with a fresh start into quarter two. Any questions for me? All right, thank you.
What about homecoming? Did we miss that? How was homecoming? Did you have a good time?
Oh, yes. Homecoming, um, happened in October and it was, I personally do not attend, um, but a lot of my friends enjoyed it and it was, there was a lot of different activities happening.
Excellent.
And I do just want to, sorry, I don't want to steal your thunder, but I do want to mention that the boys soccer team is playing this evening in the semifinal game, so. We wish them luck as well.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Maddie. Marcia?
And I wanted to say the Veterans Day assembly was well done beautifully, beautifully done.
And Ms. Zen?
Yes.
Uh, um, when you get a chance, we can backtrack to uh, Mr. Barton has a, a short report.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Oliver. So sorry. Let's back up to that. Sorry. I was moving things along just a smidge too quickly.
I'm gonna ask Brian Greenleaf to come up.
So sorry, Oliver.
He hasn't been here enough. Uh, so this is very brief. Um, you know that there are staffing shortages across the state and particularly in education and we often have short-term leaves of certified teaching positions. And at the middle school, we have a Spanish teacher who will need to be out uh, for about twelve weeks. And we've been looking very hard for someone qualified to step in and teach Spanish and have come up short, which is very discouraging. We're continuing to look. Uh, the middle school administration did find someone for the second half of that twelve-week period, so that cuts it down uh, to a shorter period of time. And instead of impacting, so there are two full-time Spanish teachers at the middle school, each with uh, five courses each, packed with students. And instead of impacting uh, only the teacher sections who will be out, we've decided to um, use the remaining Spanish teacher uh, to cut that time in half. So he'll teach his regular classes uh, for three or four weeks and then uh, the other, the other students whose teacher is out. In the meantime, um, when the, when they're not being taught by that certified Spanish teacher, we've put together a team to do some work uh, with students on um, digital literacy and uh, blogging with connections back to the Spanish curriculum. And uh, our, one of our technology integration specialists who was hired this year named Derry Thomas um, has a strong background in Spanish and will make the connection between that sort of tech and library media focused work and the Spanish class. So she's actually excited and, and just jumping in full force uh, to do that along with Linda Robinson, library and media specialist at the middle school, uh, assisting as well. So we'll, we'll be providing as much continuity as possible and we're confident that those will be valuable learning experiences. Uh, but it is a disruption in terms of having their regular Spanish teacher there uh, through that time period.
I can tell you, Oliver, I had a car full of the children that will be experiencing this and they're all very excited.
Oh, good.
They are. They're very excited about being able to do different things.
Yep.
Being in different locations, they go to the library and the Spanish class and they were all abuzz, so. Let's make sure it's a very positive.
I look forward to hearing that feedback uh, during the process and at the end as well.
And if I could just um, you know, compliment uh, our staff and including Oliver, um, there's, there's a host of challenging situations that are occurring all due to staffing shortages and a variety of circumstances. Oliver's working uh, very well with our teachers. Uh, we have amazing, talented staff that is willing to step up and do unique and creative things. Um, and you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make, we're gonna take lemons and make lemonade is what we're gonna do. And so uh, this is, this is a team effort and so uh, shout out to um, our staff, teachers um, and Oliver for doing great work here, so thank you.
Lemon's into lemonade and it's not an easy task, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I skipped you. Marcia, we're on to you for board liaisons.
I spoke to, I spoke to um, Mike at Center School and I'll just read a few things that he's had to say about their um, activities. Their harvest parade at Arbor Park was a huge success. Um, they also celebrated Unity Day and that went, was, event was a school-wide celebration outdoors and you could see that on the Ellington video. And lastly, they are participating in food drive for Thanksgiving to give back to the community.
Great, thank you. And we heard Carrie from you on Windermere, anything you wanted to add for that? Nope, thank you.
Anything, Andy?
Over here, no?
No.
Nothing.
No meeting.
No, no meeting, okay. Oh, yeah, that's right. Miriam?
Yes, um, the wellness committee met on November fourth. And um, we, this is the year, the wellness committee is, has to do with us getting money from the federal government. We have certain state and federal requirements. We're having a tri-annual review of our policy this year. Um, the committee met just twice in the two years that I've been on the board because of COVID. So it's, we're like restructuring again. And um, we're, the goal is And we're, the goal is to do some collaboration with the North Central Health District to make sure at the end of the year, we have a report that is given to the board and would also be out on our website to enlarge our role of Whitson, going out to teach nutrition lessons to elementary students, to continue and to try and increase our wellness, the wellness of our staff and work on that. So it looks like we have a very, and to complete this tri-annual report, which is a requirement. So it looks like they have a full plate.
Yes.
And we'll keep you updated.
I just had a question. So when I sat on Whitson's presentation, they're supposed to bring in these stuffies, you know, like Mickey Mouse and whatever, but they're, but they have their own animals.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Right. I think the kids love this thing. They have to get those stuffies. Only one time it happened. I think that was Brian Greenleaf. Oh, twice it happened.
He'll deny it.
I really love to see these characters coming into the elementary schools, talking about foods that build your immunity, healthy foods, whatever, sampling some, like food, some healthy-type foods that maybe some kids don't get a chance to eat. This was all sold to us during that presentation. And I know COVID happened, but even pre-COVID, I felt like we didn't get enough of that.
It was lackluster in the elementary caricature area.
They said they were going to be doing once a month with a, with far, like promoting, like these vegetables and like really promoting it and bringing these green smoothies. I was like so excited I wanted to eat there. That is, that, I just don't know, maybe I got sold a bill of goods. I feel like we really have to make sure they're doing these things. Kids do like that stuff. And I know we have sixth graders that may not get into it or fifth graders, but the younger kids definitely love to see a big goat come in or cow or something. I don't know if you have a costume back there.
I believe Brian would like to speak to the goat.
I can tell you, having been mobbed by a group of sixth graders, that they get into it as well.
Okay, so that's what I mean. I want that.
Were you the character?
I want that.
Yes, I did, I did dress up at Crystal Lake School for one of them. I don't know if there are any photos. I'm gonna delete them.
Oh, I hope there are.
I'm gonna delete them if I can find them, so. Yeah, no, look, I agree with you. Obviously, you know, I think you mentioned COVID has happened. It is something that's on our agenda. We did, we're able to do it, I think, the first two years of the, our contract with them. And they do do promotions within the schools on a monthly basis. Maybe we need to do a better job promoting that. But they do do, you know, again, prior to COVID, you know, at the high school here, we did Ramen Day. I know there's a picture of Scott eating sushi one day. That probably is his Twitter profile picture, I think. So we do, there are things that have been doing. I don't want you to feel like we were sold a bill of goods and it's not happening, because I think the program's been.
But no kids have told me that's happening, and they will tell me. I know these children, they are coming to tell me.
Again, I think if they think the context is the last.
I understand, I understand.
So I think one, one fun thing we can do is we can target also making it a segment of Education in Ellington. And so we can, you know, target the dates of when we're going to be doing it, and then we can video it, and we can add some graphics and some healthy things, and that could further promote the program so that kids see it and remember it.
I will volunteer to hand out the green smoothies and to the kids.
No, I think you should volunteer to wear a costume.
I don't know about the costume. I don't care. I'll do it.
I think you're talking yourself into this in public now.
You know what? I'll do it, because I said to Mr. Wilson today, Mr. Wilson, for any of you that don't know, is the janitor over at Windermere, and I showed up there to, to, for the Holiday Fair to do some logistic stuff. And I said to Mr. Wilson, did Ms. Hill tell you that you will be Santa this year? And he started laughing, and he said to me, I'll do anything to see those kids smile. So he is just the very best, and so I think Mr. Wilson would be willing to do it as well, right along with me, so.
I know Mr. Neal over at Center School, I think, did it one year as well. I wasn't in the costume for overflow of volunteers, so. You know, we definitely would encourage anybody who wants to volunteer to come in.
Ms. Sosha, you're, that was a nice pivot. It's noted away from wearing a costume. We saw that.
I see that, okay.
I want you to know that I have, did ask Lindsay Steller and told her that I want to be involved. I want to go to the different schools and have lunches. And what I will do is I will reach out to her and tell her about this also. And I think it's important, before I, COVID arrived before I could even figure out what this committee was doing, and then it was non-existent. The federal requirements to, to do an evaluation of the program were pushed off. And so it's like we're starting new.
Okay.
So I will hope to have a active role in helping this committee get started.
Awesome.
And then I'd also like to do a call out to the high school for the Veterans Day program. It was impressive.
Thank you. Jen, do you have anything for liaison?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
And certainly board members, if you want to sample the food at the high school or the elementary school and come in, that's a very good and appropriate thing for a board member to do during the day. You get a little feel of the kids, you can see things. Just work, contact Jen Brown, and we'll be able to set it up and work it out for you.
I'll be having lunch there the week of the 6th during the Holiday Fair. But if you guys would like to join me.
Again, with the Holiday Fair.
Jen Zen will also be there.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, thank you.
More information to follow.
I know, there's like, is there a full moon tonight? Thank you, everyone. Action items. We will move to action items.
Madam Chair, could I have a question, please?
Sure.
The minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the October meeting don't appear to be on the agenda. Do we need to vote on those minutes? Or was that under the consent agenda?
They were, that was under the consent agenda. Thank you, Miriam. Approval of the Board of Education Legal Counsel. Someone want to read that motion? Anyone?
I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to approve the firms of Chinian Associates LLC, Ford Harrison LLP, Keenan, Esclera, and McHale PC, Pullman and Comley LLC, and Shipman and Goodwin LLP, to represent the Board of Education for collective bargaining, negotiations, labor relations, personnel issues, and other educational issues for the period of 2022 to 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
I just would like to ask a question. Is there any retain or anything that's associated with these? Just these are the ones that we approved, and you go ahead and.
Correct. If we don't, if we don't access them, we're not charged anything.
That's a good question, Liz.
So we're, we are, we hire them on a.
Right.
Hourly, an hourly fee, is that correct?
Yeah, they, each year they give us what their fees are, and, you know, depending on whether you access partners or you access associates will determine. So one of the flexibilities that the Board has offered me is when I have a wide variety of firms that I can choose from. So for example, Shipman and Goodwin is a, is a very large firm with a lot of services. So if I need something really special, like we needed, we needed environmental lawyer for a water thing one time, Shipman's a really good firm to go to and to access that. Keenan Esclera is Fred's firm, Fred Dorsey's firm, so we've used that for many things, as you're well aware. There was one, there's a change in there, so if you, if you notice, it said Chinian Associates. It used to be Chinian Muser, so Craig Muser has left. Chinian Associates has moved down with his family down south. And so Chinian Associates is a little bit more thin right now with some of the access. We used to access that for some of our special education needs. So if you look, there's a, there's a new firm on there that is Pullman Comley. And they have a couple of excellent special education attorneys that I'm working with Christie on, Dr. Laporte, to see if it's going to be a good fit for our needs for special education. I also make it, I make the firms very well aware that we have access to four or five firms, that we are not a one-stop shop for just one firm. And so that, that keeps them engaged in the business that they need to perform, or else we will not access them.
Any other questions or discussion? The motion was seconded by Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Approval of the 2022 Board of Education Regular Meeting Schedule?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2022 Board of Education Regular Meeting Schedule as discussed and amended by the Communications Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Angie. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Acceptance of the personal retirement request of Frank Wright Courier. Wright, I'm sorry, what is it? Rayo. Kurt, what? I'm sorry. Did somebody say something? Oh, sorry. Effective November 30th, 2021. Now go, Marcia.
Okay. I'm being accused of interrupting.
Oh, sorry.
I move that the Board of Education accept with regret and best wishes the retirement request of Frank Wright Courier effective November 30th, 2021. Second.
Seconded by Liz. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Number four, the acceptance of the personal retirement request of Barbara Kelleher, Administrative Assistant, effective June 30th, 2022.
Move that the Board of Education accept with regret and best wishes the retirement request of Barbara Kelleher, Administrative Assistant, Facilities Department, effective June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made by Liz, seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, wait a minute. Would that be 22 or?
That would be 22. Good catch.
We stopped that over again?
Yep. Go ahead, say you want to do it again.
Move that the Board of Education accept with regret and best wishes the retirement request of Barbara Kelleher, Administrative Assistant, Facilities Department, effective June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Marcia. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Approval of the 2022 through 2028 Capital Improvement Plan?
Move that the Board of Education approve the 22 through 28 Capital Improvement Plan as recommended by the Operations Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Liz. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Onto old, new business. Any older new business? What do you? Yes, we do. I'll get to that at Roundtable, though. Okay, thank you. Correspondence, Beverly Russo was here this evening. She had sent us a question, or she had given us questions at the last meeting. I did reach out to her to let her know that Scott would be more than willing to sit down and discuss her questions with her. And she responded that she was looking for the board members to answer those questions. Roundtable discussion, I will start, I would ask Brian if you could give us a brief description on the screen and stay.
So you all got, I believe, the emails that I sent out to the group that was impacted by the implementation of screen and stay that weekend that it came into place. So we have implemented that across our schools. The main thrust of the screen and stay is that they are, students that are identified as close contacts are allowed to stay in school if the parents sign an attestation that they're going to screen their students for symptoms of COVID for a 14-day period. The students are able to remain in school the whole time. It is eligible students mostly based on contact within the classroom and on the bus. But say, contact outside of school would not be eligible for it. So I'm happy to entertain any questions on our implementation of that.
Well, I have some questions. I'm very familiar with the screen and stay, as you know. So with the outside of, so if you're inside of school, my understanding is that your vaccination status is, does no longer matters, correct? With the screen and stay? So prior to screen and stay, if you were unvaccinated and you came in close, you were contact traced, then you had to quarantine, but now with screen and stay, your vaccinations, the vaccination status of the student doesn't matter. It's just a screen and stay, correct?
It certainly has reduced the number of students that would have to go out on quarantine, yes.
But is that accurate, that now the vaccination status of the student is not relevant with the screen and stay?
No, it's not totally irrelevant, because a student who is vaccinated would not have to participate in the screen and stay.
Oh, at all? So they don't have to do the attest, okay. All right, so thank you for clarifying for me for that, because I didn't know. But so how does it affect the unvaccinated students for the extracurricular activity versus the vaccinated students?
Screen and stay has no impact versus the previous guidance on that. The real benefit of the screen and stay is that they're allowed to stay in school. All other extracurricular activities are the same as they were previously.
So, so, so please correct me if I, if I'm wrong in my understanding of this. So if you're in an extracurricular activity and you are not, and you're a student and you are not vaccinated, you have to quarantine from that activity, whether it's a football game, or soccer, or dance, or whatever the activity is, you have to quarantine for 10 days, but if you're a vaccinated student, you can still continue to play as if nothing happened?
That is the guidance, yes.
Okay, so. I think that the issue with the, the vaccinated versus unvaccinated, so now the student has to disclose what their medical status is, and then they're basically penalized if they haven't been vaccinated regarding the extracurriculars at this point. Is that correct?
You know, when we implement the guidance, we're implementing it across all grade levels and things like that.
I understand, but it's just, it's just a yes or a no. So if the student that's unvaccinated for the extracurriculars is, then has to 10 days of not participating in that activity, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and so, so now the issue of whether a child is vaccinated or not becomes basically public information? Because they have to answer that question in order to play, correct? Once they're contact traced.
For, specifically speaking about screen and stay, there is no change from the previous guidance on the quarantines.
Okay, but I just want to make sure all the board members understand and that I understand what is happening in the school system. I do not, I am not blaming you, Mr. Greenleaf. I understand that you're following state guidelines, and I understand that you're not, that we're not able to sit here and create this as a policy. This doesn't exist in the Board of Ed policy. This is what the state's telling you have to do. And if we don't do and follow that recommendation or that mandate, because it's really not a recommendation, that mandate from the state, what would be the penalty to Ellington school systems, if you know, Brian?
I don't know of any specific penalties. I know there are some caveats within the ARPESR money as to the Safe Return to School Plan that you have to do, as well as universal masking requirements within there, but nothing specific to the guidance that we're talking about.
So if the Board of Ed passes, passed hypothetically speaking, passed a policy that said that we were not going to distinguish between vaccinated and unvaccinated students for purposes of learning and/or extracurricular activities, would that impact our district in any way, shape, or form from the state or in any other manner, in your opinion?
Yeah, I mean, I, in my opinion, I don't know. But I would say certainly the Department of Public Health experts may say that it would impact our case rates. I don't know if that's the truth or not, but that is what the state would say.
So is the administration making the decision to follow the state mandates based on? on the impact of the rates of COVID? Is that what you're saying?
I would say that we trust our Public Health Department to give us the guidance.
So you're making the decision based on the Public Health Department to, to, to have some kids, so, but let me understand this. So if you're vaccinated, if you're a student, I just want to talk about students, not staff. If you're a student and you're vaccinated, can you get and spread COVID according to what you're being advised by the State Health Department?
I would say that the State Department of Public Health would say that a student who is vaccinated would be less likely to contract COVID and therefore less likely to spread it within the schools.
Okay. So the question I have, though, in less likely, in what percentage?
The latest data that they showed us, I believe, was seven times, sorry, it was, it was five or seven times more likely to have case if you're unvaccinated than if you're vaccinated.
With kids?
That's data from, I'm telling you data from the State Department of Public Health.
Speaking to the mic, though, so we can hear you, Steve.
Is that a factor, is that a theory?
Those are the case data that they were reporting out of their metric system.
Specifically kids?
No, that was across the state.
So is it the Board, is it the administrative, administration's policy to continue to identify children that are vaccinated and unvaccinated?
We do not identify in any way.
Based on contact tracing, is it this, is this administrator's, administration's policy to identify kids based on their medical status of whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated?
I would say that in implementing the guidance, it does matter whether or not they're vaccinated or unvaccinated. Obviously, the screen and stay protocol allows students to stay in school, and therefore there would be no reason for students staying in school to be disclosed in any way.
If I could just interject. When the administration is doing, and thank you for your questions, Carrie. When the administration is doing contact tracing, and they've determined that a student is a close contact, at that point in time, the student or, and/or the parent can disclose whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated. If they choose not to disclose that, it would be considered that they would be unvaccinated, and they would have to quarantine. If they choose to disclose their vaccination, then they would not have to. So there's a choice to be made, yet if they want to be able to access not quarantining, they have to be vaccinated and disclose that.
Well, how is that a choice? If you say, if you say that you're not going to tell what your child's status is, then you're, you're punished?
There's an assumption, there's an assumption in that regard, you're correct.
Okay, and then the child doesn't get to, so based on their medical status, based on whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated, decides, and based on randomly who they're sitting next to in class, they're showing no symptoms, and yet they can't go to the things that they live the most for, whether it's soccer, football, cheerleading, drama, singing. How about you're in chorus class, and you're told you can't sing because you're not vaccinated, and you are, you're not supposed to be singing at that point because you sat next to somebody who tested positive? How, how are we dealing with that social emotional things when we're, when we have adults treating our students this way? How are we doing this? And why bother hiring a social emotional person to deal with the damage that we're actually causing by implementing state policies or CDC, or I don't even know who's saying all of this stuff?
So I think your point of the emotional and psychological impact that could be happening to students that are vaccinated versus unvaccinated, and the different rules and regulations that the state has mandated school districts to implement, is a very good point. And it is something that needs to be addressed. So I'm, I'm in agreement that that could impact students from a psychological or emotional standpoint of having to navigate the differences in rules and mandates that the state is forcing upon the school district.
If I may, Superintendent, when, when you describe the fact that the parents could say if their child is vaccinated or not, could that parent also disclose that their child had COVID and would likely have natural immunity?
They can disclose that. The state has not allowed us any latitude to be making other decisions based upon any natural immunity or past COVID virus that a student has had.
That is after, after 90 days, there's a 90 day.
Yeah, I was just going to say for the first 90 day, or the 90 days, they are.
And when, okay, and when you're unvaccinated, and you're told you can't do any of these extracurricular activities, do you then have the option to test and get a negative test to then return to these extracurricular activities?
Within the school district, no.
So I think that there's a lot of concerns that we, I think I'd like to see some of these items on the agenda for the board meeting, meeting next month, if we could table it to that point. To Carrie's point, we do need to, and, and the public that was here today, we need to have further discussion.
And if I could just point a border, Liz, I think we're past time that we would have to extend the meeting.
We have 20 minutes.
No, we have, we have 20 minutes.
We have 20 minutes. And certainly.
Know what the protocol is, they're wearing masks all day at school, and are they all wearing masks when they do their extracurricular activities after school?
Correct. Oh, I'm sorry. No, not outside.
Let me, let me address that, Liz, so just because of a timely fashion. And may I suggest, depending on a fluid situation, right, that it may be necessary for the board to consider having a special meeting, possibly depending on different announcements that are made and different actions that want to occur, if not at the, at the December board meeting. But what I, what I would say, Liz, to your question, is that right now it is in place that at, at the extracurricular activities after school, in school, inside, everyone has to wear a mask. What we are anticipating is that the, possibly as early as Thursday, that there may, the CIC may be providing more guidance. There's speculation as to what that guidance is going to be. And I certainly have been in conversations with many different people, trying to anticipate what that would be, and how to inform the board, and to allow the board to discuss that and make any decisions of how they would like to move forward or not. And I've kept our Board Chair, Zen, informed of some of that work that, that I have been doing in preparation for that. And so we will see what is announced tomorrow, if it's announced tomorrow, which we anticipate, and I will keep the board informed immediately.
I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I know that I ha, I take issue with some of the comments that were made tonight by the public. I don't volunteer my time to be called a coward or a child abuser. So I believe that what, one of the things that we do need to do is to, again, to your point, Jen, make this an action item and have a conversation, because to sit here and be called those names was, was awful. And it's not the first time it's happened. It's happened almost every month since August.
Point taken.
So how do we get our questions answered before the meeting? Or what, if I have three specific points that I have an issue with?
Have you talked to, have you reached out to Scott to talk to him about any of those, or no?
Couple of them, yeah.
Yes, so I'm, I'm aware of several, it's, it's very permissible, it's very appropriate, it's a very good practice if, if you have concerns and questions about particular things that are going on right now, to contact me. And I've had discussions certainly with, with Ms. Moser on some of her concerns. And certainly if there's going to be a meeting coming up where the board is going to discuss something in public about whatever the topic is, and if it's masking, or quarantining, or any of these things, and board members want to meet with me individually to get more information and to make their, some of their positions clear, or to ask questions so they can figure out what they want to contribute in a public conversation, that's, that's encouraged, that's, that's appropriate, and board members have done that at, at times throughout the pandemic.
So I think we will either have a special meeting, or we will be discussing this at length at the next board meeting.
Absolutely.
Are we still on Roundtable?
We can be. Is there something else you wanted to add to that?
Yes, so I, yes, I do. So I just want to ask the administration.
I'm sorry, Carrie, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just do want to keep conscious of the time, so if we are going to the 15 minutes, we'll have to stop.
I understand.
Okay, I just want to let you know what the process, what the process is.
Yeah, I just got a few more questions. So when we voted on the social emotional specialists, it was presented to us that that person was going to go into the classrooms and help the teacher deal with some, any kind of behavioral issues or manage situations. You recall that, Scott?
Yes.
Okay. And so I, what I wanted to ask about that, has that position changed at all?
No.
So I'm receiving concerns, there's lots of stuff in the media regarding critical, critical race theory and social emotional learning that's being taught in the school system. What is our administration's position on that? Are we teaching that, and if so, at what grade levels, and in, in what aspect of the curriculum?
Yeah, the, the position is we are not implementing critical race theory or anti-racist curriculum. There's no intention to do so, and that is the position.
Okay, is there any state mandate that we, that we instruct on any of this?
No.
Is, okay. Is there any funding attached to this, to CRT or SEL?
Not, not to my knowledge, no.
Or, I mean, right now to our school district?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
I just, just, I'm just going to have to go back and look at some of the comments that were made during, were made during open forum there, Citizens Forum, regarding some of the stuff that's on our website, because I had some questions about that, too. So I didn't know if you wanted, if I, if you wanted an opportunity to address some of the things that, that we're working on racial identity and implicit bias and anti-racist, is that something that is, what one of the speakers had mentioned that?
That was on the website. We have a social emotional website, that's been up there for probably two years. That's, it's not new.
It's real, it's, it's not, it's not part of the curriculum of what we are teaching. It is something that some of our councils have put up there, that parents were asking for some of the resources that they wanted to inquire about. I think that the, the page needs to have context to it, so people can understand what it truly is. It's just, it's designed to be just a bunch of different resources that if you want to access them, you can, if you don't, you don't. We are not infusing those resources into our curriculum in any formal way. That doesn't mean that some of the topics may not have come up in, in different discussions that have occurred.
Okay, and in terms of our library content that, that's in the school, is, are we, I guess, is that, are we promoting that through literature, those concepts, or in the element, specifically in the elementary and middle school libraries? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that you're going to find in the middle schools and, and high school libraries, a wide variety of books and theories and different things that students may access that they're interested in. There's much more latitude when you have a school library to go and select something that you want to read that you're interested in, that is, is of your ilk, of what your parents want to read, and have a lot of choice in that. I think by and large, one of the things Ellington's done fairly well in their classes overall, with some exceptions, is that students get to choose books that they're interested in. Now, that doesn't mean always the choices are perfectly sound of what a kid would want to choose, but we've made it fairly clear since five or six years ago, that if there are particular books that may be required, or may be part of a syllabus in like the high school, that a parent do not want their, their children to read those books, that is totally fine, and we can find something else for them to read. I do think it's, it's, it's important for, this is a public school system, it's important for students of all different walks of life to be able to access a variety of books that they feel is important to them and read and to discuss. There is a difference of a teacher selecting a book and pushing forward what they may think that the entire class needs to be reading, that other parents may find objectionable for their child. So there's, there's a difference in that. And so I think that what will be important, especially in our elementary grades, is that yes, students do have what people want to call voice and choice, right? Like if they want to read something, our, and I believe that you're all aware of this, we had, we had a, a small committee that looked at a whole host of different books in the library, K through 2, and have different inclusive books into that library, okay? The, students are not required to read any of the books in that library, but they can have access and choice to some of those books, okay? And so I think what we need to continue to work on as a school district is to ensure that our teachers make good decisions on what, what some of the required reading is that we do, but yet at the same time also honor parents and their children who may want to read some things that are not as mainstream in terms of their thinking, and to be able to reflect on them and discuss them as individuals. So that's the, that's, that's the line, and that's the mindset that I think that we need to have. But remember, that's a, that is a moving target, right? So you have 245 teachers, you have 2,700 students, you have at all developmental levels. And so we have to continue to work on a culture where our teachers and our parents and our students understand that, that, that is, that is the approach. Because a school is for everyone, but we also do not want to be imposing values on our, our different students in different ways that their families are not comfortable with. So to be continued, and I can tell you, Superintendent, I take that very seriously. We want to honor everyone. And we, we want our kids and our families to make choices, and we will work to that end to the best of our ability, knowing that it won't be a perfect process, and at, at times it will be a little bit messy. But that's, that's the approach that we're going to take.
I just want to make sure we're being really transparent with the parents, that they're seeing the, you know, the options. And I will say last year that the books were presented online, so I could see what, what was out there that they were, that my, my child was choosing, and then having a discussion like, is this seem like a good, a good book to read? So I think that we have to continue to be transparent so that parents that do want to be involved with what choices their, their student is making in, in literature that they're reading.
Right. And, and I would say, by and large, the choices that I've seen have been fairly represented, fairly appropriate. I've seen where, there's been a couple of different occasions where the choices have been exceedingly limited and geared towards a particular way of thinking, which that has been communicated to say, you can't allow for 10 choices, and eight of them are one school of thinking, and really limiting options and pushing an agenda that a particular teacher may, may or may not have. And so when that has been understood to be the case, that has been communicated to say, you need to provide more choices. And you need to, you need to allow parents to see the different books, and you allow, need to allow the kids to make their choices and not limit them. So we're working on that, so your point is well taken. I also would mention that in terms of transparency, as we evolve with, and, and I'm going to use the phrase emotional intelligence, as opposed to social emotional learning, as we evolve with our, our, our children learning about emotional intelligence, when I talk When I talk about emotional intelligence, I'm referring to, um, do our children, do our students know how to listen? Do they know how to empathize? Do they know how to recognize that they've had experiences? And that is the frame of reference they come from? And that other individuals have had their experiences, however their upbringing has been, whatever their culture has been, and they have their perspective. And that, um, emotional intelligence is about recognizing that, about being able to communicate effectively with one another, uh, with, about being able to agree or disagree on particular elements of things, but still respect people, and to listen and communicate in a fair and respectful way, and know that just because you've grown up one way doesn't mean you understand everything that's happening in the world, that people have different experiences. This is emotional intelligence. This is what allows people of different races, of different persuasions, whatever these may be, to work well together, even if they may not totally understand where one, someone is coming from. So when we go down this road of emotional intelligence, that is going to be the framework of what we're going to do. Um, and that will be transparently communicated to parents, so they understand the framework, the standards, the skills that we want our, our students to learn, and how they will be applied, um, in the classroom in ways that are, um, open, so parents can have conversations with their children about it as best as possible. That's what we're gonna try to do, that's gonna be a moving target, but that's the thrust and nothing else.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that hasn't? Carrie, did you have anything else?
May I have a couple minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, um, I guess I'm really feeling the frustration of parents because we're waiting, and that's what I keep being told, we're kind of in a waiting period of time here. Um, I also don't like being called a coward, and it's, it's hard. But I also don't want to feel like there's discrimination, and that's what I'm getting with the medical status, um, situation here. Um, I am young enough to remember HIV, and like, you couldn't, you know, you could not discriminate on that in a lot of ways, and I'm really feeling like the, the pressures of our children, it's really putting a lot of pressure on them. Some feel it's up to the discretion of the teacher, and if you're kind of like, you're maybe like sought out, like, yes, for sure they were a close contact, their mask wasn't always up. Well, it's at the discretion of the teachers, what I was told a little bit, and of course they got quarantined. I guess I'm, again, with the emotional side of things with our children, I feel like they are put under extreme pressure with, oh no, now we gotta quarantine. And then there was a situation where the family was all, there was about five of them, tested positive, one was negative, and that student, as a negative test, I was told had to stay out for twenty days. And I'm like, if we're gonna believe the positive test, how can we not believe a negative test? So it's really frustrating on a parent's side, in addition to hearing the frustration and feeling that from the parents tonight.
Um, point well taken, and I would say that, from my perspective, um, and I, there's been, I think it's at like sixty-three total Tuesday Department of Public Health calls, um, at eight AM in the morning, that typically I am on most, and Brian is also on them, and I appreciate him always attending those with me, he's usually driving into work and listening. Um, the State Department of Education, uh, is, is also a part of those calls, right? Sometimes you get the commissioner from, uh, the Department of Health, and sometimes you don't. Um, and I would say, um, throughout the pandemic, there has been, um, a series of, of wise decisions, uh, that have been very logical, um, and made a lot of sense, that have been done for quite some time. But there have been, um, in my estimation, um, uh, decisions that have been made politically, um, in different ways, through the Department of Public Health. And as time goes on, when they've made political decisions that are confusing, um, whether it's quarantine or screen and stay or testing, or whatever those decisions have been that have been in conflict with one another, that people have not been able to understand and make sense of, over time, it's frustrated, um, parents, it's frustrated.
Yeah, Scott, we're gonna have to vote to go in.
Can I move and we extend the meeting fifteen minutes, please?
Anyone want to second that, to extend the meeting fifteen minutes?
I'll second now.
Miriam, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries, we're extended fifteen minutes.
I apologize, I didn't mean to do that to you. Um, I felt it was important to address it. Um, and I, I think we're at a, at a point in time where, um, I'm sensing amongst my colleagues and different folks, uh, there's frustration with the Department, Department of Public Health, and some of the, um, decisions that, that, that seem to be in conflict of what the science was and what, how it's being applied now, and that's challenging. Um, I can, I can also just, um, and, and for the record, for anyone in the Department of Public Health that's wa- that will watch this, um, you know, I, I certainly think they're working hard to do their best, um, and I appreciate their efforts. There have been times where challenging questions have been put into the chat by myself and other superintendents, and they have not been answered or acknowledged. And I think that that's, that's also very frustrating. Um, that has been communicating, uh, to various individuals, uh, that if you're asked a very difficult, tough policy question, um, or inconsistencies, or more clarification on the data that's being presented, of how the data has been, uh, um, presented, um, that that needs to be addressed. And I do not, um, pretend to understand all of the data and all of the science behind everything, but if, if you're not gonna engage in difficult conversations regarding it, it's gonna make it very difficult for us to support some of the guidance and, and mandates that are coming out. And so I don't know what the, the next announcement will be from the CIEC regarding this. Um, I don't know how things will evolve. Um, I've continuously said to all of you, it is a fluid situation, uh, but it's consistently getting more and more inconsistent. And that is a concern as superintendent, and I am more than willing to engage all of you in increased dialogue around this, so that I may make recommendations and/or you may make decisions of how you want to proceed as a Board of Education, with how the Ellington community is gonna move forward.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Liz.
Okay. Um, first of all, there's about twenty-six hundred students in, um, in our schools. Um, I would say there's at least that many parents, um, and I think that we are listening regularly to a small group of all the parents we have in town. And a lot of the parents are very concerned, this is a public health issue, and they do want their children masked, and they do want caution taken so that their child doesn't contract this disease. So I think we, I don't know if you people have heard, but I have heard from a lot of parents that are very concerned, and they want their children to be safe, and they want their children to be masked until we can find a better solution, either vaccination or pills or whatever we need to, to cure this disease. This is gonna be around for a while, and, uh, I, I think that maybe parents that, I, I mean, I have had people approach me and, and say, um, even medical people, and say, can we speak to the group? Speak to the Board of Ed so they realize how bad this disease can be for children, as, and we know how bad it can be for adults. So I just, I just wanted to say that there, we're listening to just a small portion, a small percentage of the townspeople.
On one note, as far as the small percentage, and how bad the disease can be, a car can be an awful problem too, but there's millions of people driving cars. It's, it just seems like the data for kids is such a low percentage.
And thank goodness for that.
Absolutely.
And maybe the masking is helping that.
But these parents are asking for is choice. They're not asking that parents that are really concerned, and I can tell you, okay, I had the annual outside Halloween party, and there were some kids that wanted to wear their masks the whole time, and that was perfectly fine, and there were a lot of kids that didn't want to wear their masks. And I think the parents are asking for the choice. So I understand and appreciate what you're saying, Liz, and what those parents are saying, and they can certainly make that decision for their child to wear the mask. But I also hear the parents who are saying, listen, I want that same choice to unmask my child, because they have health concerns too with what the masks are doing. Um, and so I hear the both sides, but I feel like the happy medium is to let the parents make their choices for their children, and not the government or a Board of Ed or anyone else tell them what is best for their child.
But there is also, I mean, we have public health, and public health departments also make decisions, and, and not, they, the decisions that are coming down are from the health experts that are involved in public health. Now, you may not believe that they're experts, but...
But they're experts that completely disagree with the experts that you're talking about, that these other parents are relying on, that you can't give a hundred percent discount to.
And I don't only agree with experts, I think we have to make our own decisions, and that's what we want our kids to be able to do.
Free will.
I, I don't think anyone blindly listens to experts.
I'm, I'm sorry, these, you know, we have all been vaccinated for different things. Our children have all been vaccinated. When I grew up, I had chickenpox. Probably none of your kids have had chickenpox, my kids have had chickenpox. There have been a lot of diseases that the kids don't get because of vaccinations. This is, uh, uh, you know, I, I'm not gonna get into all this, I did research on this vaccine, but I'm not gonna get into that, because that's not the issue. Freedom of somebody, I mean, all our kids, I mean, you may think this is silly, but all, all our kids wear shoes, I'd rather go barefoot, but they all wear shoes when they come to school. We don't give them a choice, we don't give them a choice, though. We have a dress code that we don't give them a choice of what they can wear.
But you're talking about covering...
And now we're talking about health.
But you're talking about cov- you are talking about health, and you're talking about covering people's airwaves, you're talking about covering their facial features. I, I mean, there's third world countries that we, we are, fight against all the time for people not to have their entire faces covered, and we're doing it here, and the science and the data, for some people, doesn't support that decision because they're listening to different experts than you're listening to, or some other parents listening to. And that's the point, like, people have their, we could have the battle of the experts up here, and they all have these amazing degrees, and they graduated from these ridiculous colleges, and they're experts in these fields, and they will disagree on what is best for children. And the other thing is, these kids go everywhere else in Ellington, everywhere. I don't, name a place they don't have to wear a mask. The only place these kids go in Ellington where they have to wear a mask is school. There is no other place in Ellington that you can't walk into without a mask, unless it's a medical, a medical facility, I don't know if there's any medical facilities here in Ellington, but, but other than that, they can go anywhere else with a mask on. These kids are still getting, you know, my brother gives a perfect example about soccer. He says, all the kids had to mask up for soccer, and then they leave the soccer field, and five of them get into a car together with no mask on. Uh, that is, that's like what the, really is happening, like...
I understand, I understand.
For just one minute, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I think one of the things that I love about this board is the fact that we all have different opinions, and we all still, at the end of the night, can walk out together and be social and civil and everything else. And I think that that's something that we all need to kind of remember, we are all going to have very different opinions on this. I think the thing that we also need to kind of step back and say, yes, we were elected by these towns for whatever opinion we have, and even though we are elected officials, we still need to be respected. So I am going to ask that any further public comment maybe be vetted somehow so that we are still respected, and again, I...
Uh, no, I just completely disagree with you, I do not think you can vet public comment. They have to, I, I get that you're offended, Jen, I totally understand it, but I, I don't...
Are you okay being called a coward?
I, I am not okay with any of that, except for the fact that, uh, you...
Hang on, hang on, let me, it, it has to be freedom of speech, we have to give them the right to their freedom of speech. We ask them for their communication, so when we ask for communication, we open ourselves to however people choose to communicate that.
Fair enough.
But I do hear, I do hear your concern, I don't think there's anyone here that enjoyed those comments being made.
I think there's a respect level that's been crossed.
I, I hear you, I hear you.
I don't think we can legally stop it.
No.
No.
Nor do I think we would want to.
Right.
So, any other comments on roundtable this evening?
Shorten the time that they can speak.
I thought five minutes was short enough. I wouldn't entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move or adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by like four people, everybody I assume is okay with it, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.